...work session, I need approval of the agenda.
Motion to second.
All right, all in favor? All right, we'll get started. The first item on our agenda is the Comcat software demo.
And if we could reverse the order, we have Ryan Cohen here with Vetted Security Solutions, and since he's here with us in person, the Comcat folks are going to join us via Zoom if we can reverse the order and have him go first.
Okay, well, first item on our agenda is the black camera demo.
And so, second sort of announcement kind of thing is just having a little bit of the technology issue. We've got it showing on the middle screen, so it might be good for Commissioner Martin, you can probably see from where you are, but those of you on that side of the room may want to move somewhere where you can see that middle screen there, so you can see what's going on. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ryan Cohen. Ryan's joining us today from Jacksonville, Florida. We appreciate him coming up to be with us, and he's going to talk about their camera solution that also acts as a license plate reader. And he talked some, I think, with Travis Douglas with the Sheriff's Office, and Travis, thank you for joining us. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ryan.
Okay, so obviously, I'm Ryan. We have a camera set up outside that's reading the tags as the cars drive by. I'm just going to jump right into showing it to you. So we deployed it around four o'clock. It's not on a pole out there, but it's right way up here. And then these are some of the reads that we've been getting already. So as you can see.
It's not showing up there.
It's not?
Mm-mm. It still, it looks like it's your screen, but it's blank.
It wasn't changing the screen, was it? It's still not showing?
I wonder if you have to drag it, like you're dragging it to another screen?
I don't know.
That's what it looks like.
I have it on.
I can see you clicking around on there.
Is that changing? I can't see now, though. Is it still there?
Yeah, it's there. You want to have a sensor thing up here?
I'm good now. Okay, so obviously, this is a read that we received, and it has the image of the tag. Some are better than others, but it received, and it tells you the tag number, it tells you the date and time, and it tells you the color, make, and model typically, based on just that one image. Here's the image. So this will be, you know, I need, from what you guys are mentioning to me about, from my conversations about being able to, you know, track legal dumping, population, you know, traffic, railways, you know, the volume, how much traffic you're getting, all of that can be utilized through this tag read, through being able to, that technology. You also, from a law enforcement perspective, you guys will have all of your National NCIC and all of your warrants and stuff like that with felony. All that would be flagged, alert you inside of your car through the system. There's... So through that area, we'll again also have a geo-locate, so if you had, if you have different types of LPRs, that's a fixed point camera that's movable, but there's also some that are on, you can put them on trailers. We have some that you can mount on your vehicles. So when you're driving around, it'll geotag your, the location and read, and that's what this is symbolizing here. So you have your tag, a picture of the car that you're able to use, so you're able to visually see it, and then the plate, and then the date and time, the geo-locate, what agency read it, and then obviously the camera that read it as well. So that's pretty much, what, is there anything that, I kind of need some, what you guys want me to show more of? I mean, that's pretty much the system as a whole. There's, I mean, there's more to it as far as being able to, you know, from the law enforcement perspective, but from the county's perspective, I don't really know what exactly, other than just showing you the technology.
In terms of the unit itself, it mounts to a pole about, yeah, big. It almost looks like a trail camera for deer.
Can I, can I pass this around?
Yeah, yeah.
So, I think I'm starting with, who do I start? So in here, there's pictures of all the different types of cameras that we have, and you can read out of it. This first camera right here is what we actually have deployed. It looks kind of like a trail camera that you use for hunting, and has a solar panel and stuff like that, but this is more of your fixed point. I can pull this up visually, so if you want to.
Here, second. Can I ask you a question? A trail camera that you put up there, that say that you wanted to have, and we're talking about the black people rolling things out, a trail camera can be put up and it will function just like what we're watching here? And a trail camera, would that just be a?
They have a specific type, Motorola has a specific type of camera that they use. They have a conics, and they have a system set up. That's their first revision, it's called the Hill 5Q. They have a rear vision coming out in March that will, it doesn't look like a trail camera. It looks more like the rangefinder that you use on a golf course.
Right, but it's going to give you the same information that's going to be displayed on the screen now?
That's what this is. This is a trail camera. This is what we have mounted on the side of the pole outside. So you guys are lucky to go look at it at some point, but that, and it has all of this information that you're getting. And it's battery powered and cellular.
So that's like in an area, say, Joy Cliff Road, where they throw out a lot of garbage and things like that in your little area, and you're trying to catch in that little area. So you have your little trail camera mounted up there, and it's going to kind of look like the camouflage. They're just not saying, hey, LPR here, LPR, and we're going to not throw trash out now because we know you're watching.
Yeah, I mean, you can pervert it, you can, you can make it to where you actually see it. I mean, there's different ways. So you would get the, wherever they're dumping, you would get them coming from the phone, and then you'd be able to criminally say, you know, we got you entering and leaving at this time, you're the only car.
So Mr. Scobal says that he picked up garbage at 10:30 and just took it in, wasn't there, and at 10:45 it wasn't there. You can kind of go back in that little area and time that plane out, see the 25 car that went by there, and you go, okay, I got you.
And then you also, if you have, you know, say somebody, it allows you to do traffic. So like, say, not traffic, but to have, you know, every day, somebody passes by at five o'clock, and that's your person that you're looking for, you know, where to go look for that. So as long as you're careful, you're the units around. We have, so there's trailers as well. We do a lot of these. These are your speed trailers, and there, and down at the bottom, as you can see, there's two LPR cameras mounted to it, and that'll get, come in both directions. And these are being deployed for about 10 days straight, so you could use them as a move around. But the best effective way is to have fixed mounted, hard mounted on, like your intersections, obviously, because they work, you know, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, as opposed to like a car mounted unit where, you know, you have a deputy that only works for a 10-hour shift, and then he goes home unless another deputy jumps in that car, there's, you know, they're not getting reads as opposed to.
That's one that's down there now running off the solar box?
Yeah, it has solar and cellular, correct. It just uses a Verizon set. I don't know how well Verizon is in this county with it. But yeah, so it uses a SIM card, and it just pushes the information up, and then additionally, you all have a TaaS, which is a program that was on your laptop, and if a felony warrant drove by it, it would flag you guys, and you have it in your dispatch, or whatever, and you guys utilize it through your policy.
All right, you mentioned mounting like an existing, at an intersection, where there's stops on the side. How big of a, how big of a unit is that? Like, is it a baseball or?
No, it's, I mean, it's about that, that, it would fit in that corner and has two interns that come up.
But that's typically where the worst ice creams, you know, will hit the stop sign and throw out the window.
So you, this camera is not taking, it just takes a still image of it. It's not a live camera actually getting them throwing it out the window. You have to go, we have other solutions for that, but the particular LPR system is, that's what it does. It takes a still image of the car itself. And then you're able to get color, make, and model, as well as it takes the Carfax data. So that's how it's taken. It'll take that tag, and then it goes and gets the Carfax data and compares it to this, and then that's how you're able to get the rest of the information. So, so right here. So it has, it tells you the year. So when it's telling you the year, that picture, that truck drives by, it has no way to know what year it is, but it takes that tag, it knows who it's registered to, and knows the Carfax data, and then it goes and works with that. So it has access to that data that's included to it.
So pull that picture up on that, there. Is that a basic field of view or length of view?
So we just, I was just telling him, I needed to pick it up a little bit more, so you'd have the whole picture of the car. I just deployed this on the side of the road this a minute ago, so I didn't, I should have picked it up. I was more worried about getting the read, but it's.
So depending on how we, how we mount, you make it seem like four cars in a row can be designed.
It, it takes three images every time it does it, so it's a full fast, and it's more of a tough emotion on this particular camera. Each one of them has their own, so like, this particular camera, you wouldn't want to put it on an interstate or a high, high-speed highway because it won't keep up, but anything under 60 miles an hour is fine. But there are cameras in that book that I passed around that has, you know, it's more of your fixed point, which it's a higher, it's a higher cost camera, but it will read up 1,000 miles an hour. So I mean, it's, and it constantly, it has, it has two imagers inside it, but it requires more infrastructure and it's just a more costly thing.
Does it have any, like, line of sight analytics that you can, like a field of view?
Can you give me a description of what?
So where I'm at work is, we have security cameras that have analytics in it, and so I can put a field of view or a parking lot. Anything that enters that parking lot or moves in that parking lot, it identifies movement, starts taking the picture, and it even outlines what's different in there than what's going.
Yeah, so you're talking about like a CCTV system. We offer that as well, Vigilant, and they have the analytics built into the counties themselves as well. That's, most people think of, you can take any camera, make an LPR camera, and the real thing about this is the database in the background that allows you to, all your neighboring counties have it as well, you know, like that type of stuff, to be able to share your data, so you don't have silos of data. So like, you know, if your perk goes from town to town to town, or they're coming out of Atlanta to come here, you know, you're able to pick them up because chances are they have Vigilant as well. The, but you're talking about a CCTV system, which is constantly recording, and it adds the built-in analytics to it to, you know, push an alert or start recording or do different things, send an email or whatever, and do it. We offer that as well. I didn't, I wasn't worried though. I was talking about cameras more as opposed to just the LPR system, so.
Because I think, I mean, we know we have two purposes here. We have the license plate that we're looking for, for bad things and people coming into our, in and out of our county, but we're also looking for the folks throwing trash out.
We have, we have, we build in all kinds, we have a manufacturing shop, so we build all kinds of enclosures, either covert or overt. I mean, we put cameras inside of a roof, you know, the roof, the roof rail, the barricade type thing. I mean, we have all of those that are self-sustaining. We can have different options. It depends on what you guys are interested in. We're able to help you build all that stuff and whatever you need. A lot of the, a lot of the issue is going to be getting the data back to a central location, meaning, do you put a server in a building and then have the cameras out in the field that stream back? Well, how do you get that data back to it? Do you have infrastructure like a fiber, or are you going to try and do it all over cellular? Where CCTV and cellular typically don't go well together because of the bandwidth issues and stuff like that, but.
Yeah, that's going to be the issue, because what we need is that we're probably not going to have the fiber.
So, I mean, cellular does work, and it works fine. You just have to, there's ways to skirt around it. You keep storage local at that camera, and then offload it in non-peak hours, or trickle it back to the, to the main server, that type of stuff. There are ways to work around it. Then you're buying a SIM card for cellular, paying a service every month for that, that individual location.
Put in a small box, and then you are going to download it to a laptop. Well, if you, if you were yourself, just for example, if you were going to buy one of these systems and put it where eventual litter was at, right now, we got to pick up this Saturday on the Crystal Bay Road, because I went down that thing a few weeks ago, and it's holed. So somebody not beating somebody else is organizing, cleaning up this Saturday. But what, if you just said, if you were going to take that road, say a hundred yard stretch of that particular road, where it's just blue cool litter, which system would you look at? And which one would you?
In that scenario, I mean, you got to figure out, are you, are the people driving by, or are they people that you guys are going to be able to find or identify? You mean, are they residents of this county, or are they, or are they visitors? Like, maybe in a visitor, if I drive by, if you don't, if you don't know my tag number, you're not going to know who I am, right? But if it's Joe that drives a brown truck that drives by, so you just got to figure out what your, what your market is trying to catch. But a tag is obviously would be that scenario to catch that. We would put it on both ends of it, you'd know when they come and go through. But obviously, a lot of people in that scenario, I would say, to complement both technologies, the LPR and the CCTV, because then you're able to see, you're able to get the tag to know who the person is in the car, and then you're also able to see them doing the crime. So I mean, that would, that would be the scenario. And a lot of time, you focus on your intersections just because you know they can't go, you know, if you're riding on a road, I have to, you know, you kind of can box them in, and they don't go off-road, you know what I mean? So that's why they typically use intersections, because you have power and infrastructure like a pole and that type of stuff to mount to. So, but if you're talking about just a regular highway, then you got to put in a pole to mount the stuff to, to get it where it can't be vandalized.
I go back to what Daylon originally said. Bill gets caught, Bill pays 300, 400, 500 dollar fine. He's going to tell Tom, Tom's going to think twice about, you know, that's my thing. I mean, that's like.
So in that scenario, if you had something that's a fluid thing, where they're putting trash here now, but a year from now they weren't, or a year ago they weren't, that would be where this would come into play, because you could have the LPR and the CCTV. Can you see on the screen the trailer? That trailer is movable. And then Joe driving by doesn't know that it's got all that technology on it. All he sees is just track, it's just done in his feet. So that would be something that would probably, because we can put a CCTV camera on this, it has the batteries to run all the infrastructure and everything, and it has a cellular that goes out and talks to whatever systems you do. So that, that would be a good scenario for that.
You say the existing LPR that shares all the data?
I don't know what currently they have. What, do you guys have any LPR currently?
We have four that run off of Lexus LSAG.
Okay. Is that their dash cam, or is that?
No, that's, that's.
Okay, so LSAG, okay. And we're able, the Vigilant solution is, it's more, it has probably similar to what you have, but we're able to take in the existing cameras, like what you have too, and pipe them into the database as well. It's really the data, there's a commercial data side of it, that Vigilant offers and sells to the agencies, and it has their commercial data. So like the tow trucks driving around, they're constantly driving around looking for repossession vehicles. They use the system as well, and they sell that data back to law enforcement, Vigilant does. So you're able to get, as opposed to being able to have, it takes, you're adding millions and millions of reads as opposed to just what you're reading with your system that you purchased. So you don't necessarily have to have your own cameras at that point. You're getting that commercial data. But for what you guys are trying to do with it, for littering and whatnot, you would need your own system pretty much. Your own hardware. Are those on the cars, or are they fixed mounted?
They're mounted, they'll be.
Do these pick up like trash in people's yards, and it just put in a little subdivision?
If you, you would just need.
And all the cars that are sitting around that off-road?
If it has a tag and it moves past these cameras, it'll take a picture of it. Is that, I'm not sure if I can answer.
It won't pick up stationary stuff in somebody's yard, no ma'am. No. This is just movable down the roadways, on our roadways, people littering on the roadways.
This is a roadblock.
But that's stationary, this is not.
Can't get nothing done by calling anybody, so.
But we also have, we offer like the message boards too, that we put, that cameras on as well. So it would be, you know, don't litter, and you could write that on the sign, you know, whatever you want to put on there.
We have like a two-mile stretch where stuff's blowing out of vehicles constantly. How is that going to capture all that?
Again, it would just be the two systems probably complementing each other. One, you're getting a tag read to try and, you know, have the tag readers reading the tags, so you know who owns the car, to be able to go find them, and then the CCTV system would be watching.
That's just going to be a small area that's going to capture, right?
Well, no, we put 360-degree cameras, CCTV cameras on these trailers we can. We've done that a bunch in the past, so it sees 360 degrees for up 100 yards, you know. It obviously has to be near or in its view.
It's like a two-mile stretch, so.
Yeah.
It's really not going to capture that.
And I just, I'm going to say this on your behalf, okay? Because I do school bus cameras, and everybody thinks because I've got a school bus camera, stop horn camera on a school bus, that I'm going to stop everybody from running a school bus. Do we stop everybody from running school buses? No, we don't, because I've got them on 10 buses. Those 10 buses can't be at all 3,600 bus stops every day to capture how many people truly run a school bus. That is one camera system that we would be able to move around the county to try to capture those people in those areas to prove a point. It's not something, yes, we can put it on that two-mile stretch, and we can move it around on that two-mile stretch, but it's not going to capture everybody all over the county because it's only going to be at one spot at a time. That makes sense?
That gets back to like what Daylon said.
Exactly. You prove a point by, because let me tell you, I can tell you from point. I know somebody that got a ticket running a school bus, and he went to everybody he knew to try to get out of that ticket. But guess what? That also proved to a lot of people that those cameras catch you. So that one camera on that one bus proved a point. And I'm making a killing off one bus stop every day, because I get one every day out of that one stop. Somebody's going to run the bus stop. So this moves around the county. It's not just sitting in one location. It's sitting wherever we feel that, it may be on Overland Way one day, it may be on Grisaville or Joy Cliff. It's movable. That's what it's designed for. That makes sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
You also can put, like the radar ones, you can put data classifiers in it, so it'll be able to tell you what time your peak hours of traffic are, how many cars went by, that type of stuff as well. Or you can get grants and stuff using that information. We have these on GSA contract and like whatever procurement engine, so you guys, that helps with that as well. So, and the grants obviously help, if you want to take one, so you're able to get any of those.
Now, would it, how would that, if you bought, had that system there, say, right there close to it, there's a place of wood at the road. I'm desperate to try and get this red light. You know, he has every, I guarantee you, I picked him up Saturday, I know where they're right there, there's going to be three or four more blood light ends in that same spot. But if it's, it's like a, maybe 100 yards from there to the, to the stop sign, where he can possibly see his blood light, would that, that, I mean, that's not a speed area, because you soon got to stop there. You see what I'm saying?
Well, yeah, so.
How would that, would that look kind of?
You would just put it back away, away from it, and you'd have a, you'd need to kind of know what time that's happening, so, and then you'd know.
No worries. Somebody would look at somebody, that's goofy, you know, that's not, shouldn't be.
Well, I mean, you'd say, okay, I just picked them up on this day, I know that they happened on this day, and then you can go look at the video and say in between, and say, okay, who will pass through there? Or, or you can narrow it down more than a day. You could probably narrow it down to an hour or whatever, you know. However you would do that, you can flip the footage, the plate reads, and then narrow it down from there. You could probably look and see if they have a DUI at some point, you'll know who your drinkers are. I mean, that's, I mean, you can just start looking at all the data from the investigative standpoint.
But you keep telling me where you're looking on camera. You're even looking there a lot. You're going to go somewhere. Well, that's what I'm talking about, though. See, out there, would that thing have looked too obvious, is what I'm trying to say.
So that's the whole thing about it being just your speed. It's, they're thinking that they're trying to tell the law enforcement, trying to tell them to slow down, and the stuff's covertly on there. They don't really see it. They're in there driving by it at whatever speed. So it's not like they have a lot of time to look at it, unless you're telling them what's on it, they don't know.
I think this would be true dual purpose.
Because you can put a CCTV camera in, you can do everything with that. That's why I brought it up.
And you can get the car to try to see, if they can get the magic number to speed up, and hit the signs with their bottle.
You can have it where it'll do.
Hey, they took out the one on 49. I hate that.
The one on 49, the parts, they're getting some parts.
Okay, good.
So, and everybody tells you COVID, they can't get anything, so everything.
Yes, we have.
We've addressed that one on 49, just waiting on to get some parts. Look at the solar power.
This trailer also, not that, just so you know, it'll have, we can set it to where if there is a certain speed, it flashes lights out of them and does all the dolphin muscle, that stuff too, if that matters to you.
Oh, that's a, I don't like emotions.
So I'm assuming that something like this would probably be eligible under some public safety grants or some arson management grants.
I know a lot of counties that use COVID money to buy a lot of trailers and stuff like that, to get them for their agency.
People are used to seeing the ones that we put out all the time too. They know it doesn't have cameras on it. They know it doesn't have a radar that we go back and look specifically at. They know that's the rest of people. They would be like, oh, that's just another one.
They done spent some more of that rug money to post some little signs out here to tell us how fast we going, man.
It's time to change things up.
There's, there's a lot of different flavors of this too, so if you guys are interested, we just sit down and say, you know, here, you want the message board, do you want the radar sign, do you want? We have them where they're just like the bigger signs, but there's all kinds of different, here's one that has a CCTV camera that goes up over top of it, and that's the PTV camera at the top.
Oh, that would be too much of a target.
That's actually a picture you worked in.
Did you share a price list with Jason?
I can. It's really, you got to figure out what you want, and I'll help you find the price for it. It's, we have some other kit, it's just really, you know, are you looking for this, are you looking for that? So I'd be happy to go through this exercise with whoever, however much time it needs.
So tell me the pieces of this, would you guys like the, the license plate reader, the?
360 camera system.
And also too, I mean, the trailers are, you know, they're around 40, 50,000 dollars for the trailers with all the LPR and the CCTV on it. But that camera that's out there is only 2,000 dollars. I mean, you might do a mixture of things, and try and see what helps you guys with those.
Can you also share with him, can mine of that be covered under some of the grants? So that way.
It depends on, if you can find the grant, I can help you make the, it work with it. Do you guys have a grant ready or anything?
We work with the Regional Commission in Macon primarily.
Okay. I mean, I'd be happy to work, help with that as well, and we can make stuff work.
I was saying, you know, what you all decide on, just so I can make sure we're good to go, that there's no changes to our ordinances that need to be made to accommodate enforcement.
I think we're going to rely heavy on the Sheriff's Department of what, because my opinion, two-thirds of it, two-thirds of it is what they need, one-third of it's what we need. So we're, we're going to need, weigh heavily on, what do we have that, or what do we need that's compatible with what they got now, what they can work with, what they can haul around, and, and what they're able to, you know, how they're able to operate it.
Well, the hoops that you'll have to jump through too, as far as how are you going to ticket them, and who's going to stand up to it, because you're ticketing the tag number that's on it, and I'm driving Daylon's car one day, and I just throw every piece of trash out the window.
That's where the CCTV comes in, because they actually get to see who's in the car most.
If they can.
Still, they'll fight it.
Is that something our ordinance?
I'll tell you a problem that we've had as far as prosecuting the bus tickets.
Yes.
It's because you have a right to confront your accuser. Well, how do you confront a video camera? And so there's been a lot of litigation, like the, the red light cameras, tons of litigation in Atlanta and all over regarding whether or not those citations are really enforceable because it depletes a person of their right of confrontation. So.
I don't know, it's hard to argue with a photo. I mean.
Exactly.
I, I know your perspective of that, but I'm just, and it's hard to argue, it's black and white.
And those are the, some of the hoops that I hadn't jumped on through.
Good defense attorney argument.
Right, exactly.
The majority of people that's, if they've got plenty of money and they just absolutely want to go to court on that stuff, the people that are doing it, they're like, oh, you caught me. Most of the time, they pay. The people. But I agree with what Attorney Brody is saying too. If they've got enough money to go to court and want to do all that stuff, but most people just get caught, they pay and move on.
So we do need, I think we do need to make sure that our ordinance is, doesn't conflict with anything that we're putting out there. If it doesn't say anything about allowing for movable. If it doesn't say anything about allowing for movable roadside, we need to make sure that all that's covered in there so that we can do it. The first, I guess, uh, so, and as far as, you know, the, the discussion about, um, so-and-so drove my car. Yep, well, it goes to the car owner because if you let somebody drive your car and they throwing stuff out, you go talk to them. You let them drive your car, you go talk to them about the ticket money. Yeah. You go find Joe that used your car last week.
I just wanna make sure that we've got, we've already got those ducks in a row because it took me three years to get the stop arm cameras put on the school bus. Because of magistrate court, blah, 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 everybody, great PD, Jones County Sheriff's Department. Everybody had to be and sign off on the same page. I mean, I had to even get the county administrator. We all had to be a part of it because the fines, it was on the county roads or the city road. So I just wanna make sure that if we do this, that we've got it all together so that when we ticket this person, it's, it holds up, you know?
Which is why I say, yeah, we need to, we need to hold off on the ordinances really just to make sure that they're not some additional stipulations and, and, um, considerations.
The blight.
If it has to do with a camera, I would agree, but anything-
Yeah, no, that's what I'm talking about. Yeah.
So our next, um, next steps are to have the-
Trailer?
Huh?
Designing the trailer?
Yep, to get the sheriff's department with Jason and, um, design what we need on the trailer, determine the, the cameras we wanna look at and then the cost to go along with them and then funding source. Cause that last part always comes into play somehow.
Somehow, you gotta pay for it.
Somehow.
What kind of, uh, what, in your daily would you think, have you seen a great return on investment? I mean, what, what kind of margin have you got there? Have you seen, I'm sure some candidates are more than others and-
Yeah, I mean, honestly, the litter thing is the first, I heard you guys are the first one that's using it for that. Most of the time it's for, they're trying to get the stolen cars, a lot of them. The people stealing cars, changing tags, you know, that type of stuff, which they can, I don't know how much of that criminal activity all out here, but that's majority of what they're using it for. Um, and then the message boards are, they really just get bought just to be notifications to people of, you know, events or whatever else. Um, so I, from the litter perspective, I don't really have any information to do with that part. But I do know that if you have the CCTV and the LPR together, you're able to tie that person to the vehicle and the vehicle, you're able to find it. That type of stuff, cause you're gonna get his address and they're gonna go around and pick him up.
All right. Anything else? Anybody got anything else? All right.
Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you. And how, we're gonna set up the next, uh, gen item, comcape software demo?
Yeah, if we could take just a quick break. I'll get that, uh, setup and ready to go.
All right.
I was hoping I'll do that one first, so I'll make it for that.
Colton, we'll move around a little bit and get all this set up. We'll be ready for you in just a second.
I'm nervous again. I've had four of my clients in the last two days call us and let us know they were, oh, they're gonna have to move their hearing. A bunch of family members.
Does anybody wanna go outside and, and, uh, see the camera?
Sure.
They all drove by on, on the way in.
Is it out, out at the city street or?
But, uh, it's, it's matter, uh, just out front. How's it going?
Hell, trust.
Yep, that's all I get.
You didn't get caught.
That's why I was asking about the speed. I'm like, that's nothing.
Oh, speed. Let me see your car taking down.
Does it detect tires burning?
Two wheels coming in.
Which way?
It's a whole lot of money, Jason, for trailers.
What is that?
A whole lot of money for trailers.
Yeah, seventy-four thousand bucks.
Yeah, I think, you know, five, ten, fifteen, you know. Well, um, I wonder what it would take to retrofit one of the existing camera speed trailers? And just buy one of those two thousand dollar cameras and put them on top of it.
Yeah, you might could do that.
We can magi it or something.
Yeah, yeah.
Lot of something. Yeah, it looks, it looks like one of my, uh, cell cams.
Yeah.
Deer cams, a little bigger though.
Are we still going on? Huh? We're still on the workstation. Oh, he wants some cough drops. I ain't had no cough drop. Oh, damn. I just brought out some. You have some cough drops? Uh-uh, I brought some.
Yeah, all right. I need signing tips.
He did, he did.
Okay.
Thank you though.
You yell my number if you need me to come, you know, middle of the night like you used to call it.
You ain't gonna tell people that now. You, that was between me and you. That was between us. Fuck, yeah, I ain't giving out my secret.
Hey, I ain't got my, I ain't got my mic on. Nobody recording. It just us chickens. Thank you all. Don't ever know that. It's still just running on and on and on and on and on and on.
Colton, the commissioners are actually gonna be behind you. Um, I'm gonna set up where you can kinda see the, the audience. There'll be questions from both of them. You can stand up for just another minute. We're just about ready to go.
You need a little cushion chair? You sure? Appreciate it. Okay, I can get you one over here. You said you saw like one there.
Mm-hmm. You're getting pictures of them. Unless you just walk up and catch them. You're, uh, if you've seen some of the videos I've been watching lately by people students driving buses.
Come.
It's been fun.
Oh, yeah.
Broad daylight, twelve o'clock.
Colton, say something so I can see how the audio is going. It came to the bag? Try one more time. All right, one more sound check and then we all have it. Yeah, we're good, we're good. Colton, is there somebody banging on something somewhere near you?
I am begging on my keep. I apologize.
That might've been what it was. Yeah, it's still going. It's still going. I don't know what that is.
No, I'm not pressing that one.
Turn that, uh, microphone off and see if it's picking up.
I get distracted. You can leave that during my microphone. Just, that's all.
Yeah, maybe try that.
Okay, I'm gonna mute three, two, one.
Yep, that's it.
It did go away. Yeah, it's back. I don't think, I don't think it'll be fine though.
Yeah, that's strange. It is very, very quiet.
You got a ceiling fan?
Somebody asked if you have a ceiling fan.
I do not. I assure you there is. Close to zero dusting up here. It's darn cold up here for a season then.
Where are you from? California?
I'm a Californian up here just near the Sierra Nevada and up the beach. I definitely don't have a certain, uh, like that. And how is it out Jones County said?
It's good. It's cold now. We had, we had a week or two of very unseasonably warm weather. That's all gone now.
Y'all cooled down now?
Yeah.
You don't get much snow out there, do you?
No, maybe every other year or something we'll get, get a couple, a little bit. Everybody goes crazy and everything just down with the accident.
You know, it's too bad we couldn't come out there today. We just, we just broke, uh, Jacksonville, Tallahassee, Albeville, Oakview. And Alhambres weren't too far.
Yeah, yeah.
We could've came on up.
Yeah.
Ate a little bit too much Cajun food. That was my first time in that area. Are we waiting on two minutes though, Jason?
Yeah, we gotta just come warm. Uh, we gotta just, uh,
Hours.
We lost our presentation.
I think he forgot his notebook. I think the gentleman forgot his white notebook. Uh, there's the one that has various cameras in it.
Oh, wow. Yeah, I know. This is what triggered it. Yeah.
A camera like that that we just saw out there, you gotta secure it or somebody's gonna come by and you're not gonna have it anymore. You gotta secure it pretty good or make it hidden. You know, the portables like that. Yep. Yeah, the reconics is a good, good version. I have one similar. Doesn't have Sailor, doubt it. It's got a SD card. Actually, yeah, mine doesn't have Sailor, but easy to pop a little SD card out and download it. Just looking at farm gates. But the company's, it's good quality pictures. Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah.
All right, everybody's microphones back on. We're ready to get back started again with the second part of our work session.
Don't know yet.
With the Compgate software demo.
We're in the workshop now. I'll call you on break. Yes, sir.
So we have with us Colton Keen from, from Compgate. And Colton, I think, talks with some of the Black Committee during their work and, and more recently Tiffany and I talked with, with Colton to kind of give an overview of their solution. And so he's here with us today to, to take, take everyone through that and, and sure be happy to answer any questions at, at conclusion in his presentation. So with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to Colton.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Thank you, everybody, for having me on video today. I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person. I'm Colton and I am from Compgate and we are, we really call ourselves a complete development software company. We work with counties across the country and code enforcement with one of the focus areas that the counties tackle how to collect complaints online and how they get officers out of those properties, upload evidence, generate notices, interact seamlessly with their community, help the status of life. So what I've prepared today for you all is just a presentation about the Compgate is, after a few minutes on this slide deck, I'll show you the actual software, show you how it works and what it assesses, if it can be valuable to you, not just in Jones County. I can answer any questions you have. And in total, this really shouldn't take more than 15 minutes. Got it set up, so give you a high level overview. We can dig into any of the individuals you'd like. Can everybody see my screen here in blue with white figures on it? If you can shake your head yes, excellent. So at Compgate, we've been around since the year 2000, a software company. We were founded in California, but now we have staff. And we've worked with over 200 counties, villages, towns, cities across the country. Closest folks that we're working with near your neighborhoods are the city of Morrota Robinson. And we're also working with Lake County and other counties in the state. We have a lot of familiar, we work with folks here in, and we were founded by local government leaders. And our sole focus as a company is to empower county employees, city employees, be able to leverage technology to do more effectively and more efficiently via the higher quality of life of the citizens. We have over 27,000 staff users across the country. Like I said earlier, we have 200 agencies that we work with. And what I'm going to show you today is a completely redesigned version of our application. We upgraded the login interface two years ago, which has been fantastic. A lot of the counties are very well aware of the seat. And we purposely staff as a company ex-code enforcement, ex-building inspectors on our team. Because we like to build deep partnerships with our counties and cities that we work with. And in order to do that, we need to know what you guys do every day, and not only as citizens and elected officials, but also as building inspectors and officers and like. What we focus on as a company and what I'm going to show you in our software are these six pillars. This will be organized around these things. These are the things we're trying to empower every county to do. We're trying to, number one, promote field access. And what we mean by field access is officers and inspectors can be out in the field and also citizens can be out in the field, neighborhoods, interacting with each other directly from a tablet or local technology is a first priority for us. Number two is we try to give tools to the officers and the inspectors and also the citizens to be able to manage all of their submissions of code enforcement complaints and track the follow-ups and status of those complaints online in real time directly from a local device or computer that's in the county office. Number three is we are heavy on reporting. We believe that every county across the country with the click of a button should be able to understand the past month, quarter, year, how many complaints we've had about weeds, how many complaints we've had about trash, and if there are recurring complaints in certain hotspots of the county, what officers have been out, how many inspections have been performed. Those are all things that we provide at the click of the button. Every county should be able to do that, better manage their resources. And staffing at the end of the year to understand how long the incoming complaints are and how many light issues we're reporting this year. Number four is we have invested in digital notices. So we believe that officers should no longer have footprints and, and paper out in the field. They can do everything from a tablet, phone, and create digital notices, violations, flight letters, courtesy letters, and help encourage compliance visually. Number five is historical data. We believe a lot in leveraging data to help counties make better decisions. And a part of that is when a complaint comes in, we do a mobile phone for the citizen, whoever receives that complaint off the county staff will be able to see how many complaints have been at that location in the past, and they'll be able to see trends by giving them important information for launching educational initiatives about life and also important to try and reach voluntary engagement with citizens to help them understand if they're repeat offender, the various letters they've received in the past, even if the property has changed hands. It's valuable to the citizens to understand the history of the property. And number six is a big one that counties are focused on across the country with us is they're trying to enhance the citizen experience. When we say citizen experience, we're referring to citizens being able to easily find the county's website, easily report a light issue, easily get updates on that issue, understand what the county is doing to address the needs of that complaint. Then ultimately goes into loop with that citizen once courtesy letter is issued, the situation is resolved. In focus groups, we found citizens often feeling under-serviced in this area. They'll make a report about a light issue and 90% of the time, they feel like nobody's doing anything about it, no one's communicating with them. So we're trying to give tools to the county staff to allow them to do that more seamlessly and effectively. And then the automated things at the same time, so they don't have to do anything manually. This is the last page I'll show before we go into the software. Our implementation time for our code enforcement and citizen complaint portal is 45 to 60 days. We've been able to do that all across last year, 50 new counties that we started working with. So generally about four to six weeks to get started with us. And we can work in the face of the county, but this isn't a six-month, nine-month, 12-month implementation. We like to do very quickly these things. So I'm gonna switch screens here and I'm gonna begin my software demo today, and I'll keep it very brief, high level, with the use case that a citizen is coming to your webpage to make a complaint. Now, there's, there's several different ways. Citizens can come in and interact with your webpage, the Compgate built this for you in order to report a light issue. One way that I'm going to show you today is just from a computer. But I'd like you to keep in mind that the citizens can also do this from their phone, or they can do it from a tablet, or laptop, or desktop. They can also call, excuse me, homey channel approach, let's say. Some citizens even, some counties do even integrate Facebook, Twitter, things like that. The citizens would like to make complaints through social media. Although I didn't build that in the scope of today's demo, I can provide some additional documentation that anybody who's particularly interested in learning more about the social media piece that we're offering. So what I, what I'm showing here on the screen is the code enforcement webpage with the city of Arvada. This is a city that we work with. I thought it would be a good example to show you all how this system works that we've set up for them. And essentially what citizens do is they come to this code enforcement webpage on the Arvada, city of Arvada's webpage, and they can submit a code enforcement complaint online directly from their smartphone or computer. When they click this submit a code violation button, what it does is it takes them to a three-step process where they can describe what type of light issue they'd like to submit to the county personnel. The first thing that they do on their phone or their computer is they would type a, describe their issue, protect their issue. So here I'll say I would like to report high weeds. I'll say next door. So this is very common across the million light cases that we had in our system last year. Weeds and barking dogs and trash are the top violation types. And weeds is a great example, based on the data that we have. When someone types in and describes what they'd like to report from vegetation or high weeds, they can also accompany that with a video or photo directly from their smartphone. Here I'll just add a photo of weeds. There's no limit to the photo or videos that they can, that they can upload. We have a charge to counties who put these storage fees. You can have a video in storage if you're citizens as photo evidence. And then the citizen will click next. And what Compgate does is it automatically reads the words that they typed in as a citizen on their smartphone, that automatically assign it to what we call keyword categories. Now, for the city of Arvada, they have an overarching code enforcement category. It's also common that a code enforcement department might break this out into computation, trash and debris, setback issues, planning and zoning issues, abandoned vehicles. And then we can map keywords into those categories. And the reason we've set up the system based on our six design pillar is improving the citizen experience, is we've done focus groups and citizens really don't like categories. They go along with the choices. And they're submitting lightly, just want to describe what they saw, upload a photo, and then rest assured that it's gonna end up in the right hands at the county. And someone will get back with them. So this will be assigned to the code enforcement category. And what we do next here is we identify an address. So if I'm a citizen and I'm in my neighborhood or I'm at home or in front of a property, I'm gonna see a big blue dot on this map like you can see on your phone in your maps, for example. In addition to that, you can just type in that. So I'm gonna type in here 17426 West 64th Avenue. Click on that and the pin is gonna drop in the city. The latitude, the longitude, this location's gonna send over to an officer or supervisor that is assigned these cases at the county office. I can then put my information in. If I've been here before and I'm repeating, complaining of the forty party, all my information will populate. I can type in an email, I can type in a phone number. And what's gonna happen after I submit my issue is I'm gonna receive a notification directly to my email and directly to myself. It's gonna look just like this. This is a template that the citizen will receive after they made a code enforcement complaint, giving them a case number and also giving them a link in this text message and a link in their email that they can click back on whenever they want to see an update of that report. When they click this view issue button, when they click this link in their text message that the county sent them, it will take them to a master list of all the submissions that they've ever created with the county. I only have one submission here. I'm out of repeat. The forty party or complaining in this case. If I have, if I have repeated submitted 10 things or 20 things over the last few years, I'd see all of those reports here. And I click on them, it'll give you the status update. If I click on them individually, it will take me to the page where I can see the customer submission details. This page is intended to be very easy to read, has the original description that I left. The citizen has, has details assigned to the market they own at the county. And then also a two-way messaging here that I can message directly back and forth whoever is assigned to this light case of the county. So you can see here in this case, the county, the city of Arvada, rather in particular. Has an email template that goes directly to the citizen immediately once they submit their flight complaint. And it tells them to expect what the case number is, what they'll be doing. And then over time, as actions are performed by the county staff, automatic, automatic communication from the fire department, the citizen, letting them know once the action has been completed, once a letter of violation has been completed, and then ultimately, once a light issue has been resolved. The citizen is always definitely going to be able to handle it. In addition to the citizen view of the case, we also have a staff view of the case. So searching over back to my app here just to show you how this looks. Every time someone submits a light complaint or report, it's gonna send a notification and an email, a text message to the light, to the code enforcement team. The code enforcement team is gonna receive this email, this text message, it's gonna have an overview of who the customer was, what the location is, and what they reported. This is for a pop hole, it's the example of somebody who reported this in the enforcement department. They did get the bill that pop holes go to via public enforcement department. But in any event, whatever the citizen submits, it goes directly to the code enforcement team. They'll get this sort of notification. When they click on this to view the issue, it will take them directly to what we call the customer submission details page. Now, this is cloud-based software. So all the code enforcement officers or office staff or anybody else who can access the system can literally get in and look at these reports directly from the citizens. And we try to report as much information as we can about the actual complaint that came into this system. You can see here at the top, very banner, top banner of the case, you can see the customer's name, their email, what their phone number is. You can see what category they selected. You can see how it moves. We also have some tools we've added to the system in the last year to manage new database. So if a code enforcement complaint comes in, you can set some on SLA service level in the system so that if you don't get to a script service submission, five days, seven days, start sending on my list. People make sure that you provide the best customers as possible. So a lot of agencies, including counties in your area, have set these customer service goals on the light reports to make sure that they are enforcing the policy to get back from the citizens within whatever time frame you decide is is feasible in the county. When a citizen reports something out of a particular location, we can integrate directly with your GIS data. So you can see the citizen entered this light report at 7426 West 69th Avenue in Arvada. And what we've done is we can move all of this information directly from their assessment database into the application. So when the code enforcement officer gets this case, they don't have to go look for any more additional information. They can see the parts of light of the property. They can see the case on the natural map that has itself there. By simply like inspection, they can see which council district it's in, who the council owner is responsible for, what this council district is, lease center, the code enforcement, it's assigned to this part of town, also the land use of zoning codes. And the sky is the limit. You can implement as many fields as you like directly from the GIS data into the application for better and stronger purposes, light and activities. We can see the original description that came in from the citizen. We can see any photo evidence the citizen provided. We also have a two-way messaging queue where we can text or email directly back to the citizens, not just customer submission. In addition, we can add notes to this customer submission. We can escalate this customer submission, put a big red arrow on it and inform everybody that it's a public safety issue. We can flag this address if anything, if he has had this property that the officer uncovers to inform themselves or other officers that come out later. For example, if this is an owner who has light officers on his property and likes to let them know that, you can write certain information in here so that the officers have a heads up to take PD without the next time they go out, for example, that's something that's known across all of our counties to use our software. In addition to that, you can add tasks and notes to this submission. So if I want to send a note over to Susie in animal control, because this is a code enforcement complaint that came in and it's not code enforcement, it's actually animal control, I can add Susie to this case, give a note to Susie, assign a task to Susie. So a lot of collaboration can take place directly on these customer submissions as well. Now, when I go out to perform an inspection and I actually want to issue a letter, courtesy notice, notice of violation to this property owner, all I have to do is click create a link case. What this is gonna do is it's gonna create an actual code enforcement case or light case for this submission. The reason we separate our customer submissions from actual internal code enforcement cases is not everything that comes into your website is gonna require necessarily, necessarily a formal code enforcement investigation. Sometimes names will come in to the code enforcement team and right off the bat, the code enforcement team will be able to recognize this isn't a jurisdiction or it isn't a code enforcement issue, this needs to be sent to the fire department or it needs to be sent to the services department, or it needs to be sent to the police department and the local municipality to help it. So we like to give the opportunity to the code enforcement officer to interact directly with the citizens here on this page before they want to perform less than a investigation with code enforcement. If the officer that receives this customer submission reviews it and they identify that this is a fact of light case of the light investigation, all they have to do is click one button. They click this blue create a link case button. And that opens up a new case for them. It automatically pulls in all of the location information from the customer submission. It also pulls in the description that the citizen put online. In addition to that, it reads the submission and suggests the municipal code. So in this case, where it weeds is used here, and there's a not just weeds county ordinance available for this implementation and automatically added into the case. We have a contact section that's pre-populated with the property owner, the last person who paid the tax bill that's available in the customer's GIS data that's automatically added to the case. And also pulled a key, which would be, in this case, I would have wanted to record this issue on the website. So all the information for me that they're complaining for, the reporting party has added to the case as well. When I'm an officer, I want to create this case, I want to actually go out and perform inspection, understand federal penalties taking place there. All I have to do is click create case. I click perform inspection. And then now this is gonna take me to an inspection workflow. 60% of our users are doing this all on tablets these days and not using any pen and paper at all. So the common workflow is that an officer would receive this submission Monday, and then on Tuesday, they would map themselves out to this location, place. They would pull up in front of the property and they would start this workflow. It takes them about a minute and a half to unpack, which across all the millions of cases of the software last year, to perform this inspection. So the officer would identify that the weeds violation is correct. They have access to all of your ordinances in your county. If they identify something, they'll stay on the site. They can add that. They could add an inspection note, say they spoke to the owner. They can use the camera directly on their smartphone, tablet, to upload additional photos of days observed during the inspection. photos of days observed during the inspection. Here I'll just add a photo of some beads. They can also add a description of the beads. They can say this is a more decent order of law. Add that as photo evidence. And we also have templates for courtesy letters, first, second, and third notices of violations, admin citations, already pre-programmed into the software. Customize them to have your county seal or banner on the notices so they look very professional. In this case, I'll show you one of our most popular templates, our first notice of violation. The officer will click continue. They'll identify who they'd like to address this notice of violation to. This case, it's an LLC. They could select if they'd like to add a highlight photo to the notice on the backside of the light letter. And they can generate a warning notice. And this warning notice will be pre-addressed to the owner of this property for the latest assessment records. It will have the code enforcement case number. It will have the municipal code, a description of that code, the action that the officer would like the property owner to take. And it will also have a fee given here. So if they don't comply within X number of days, common period is usually 30 days for a violation of this type, then some client can kick in. And on the backside of the actual light letter will be a photo that the officer will begin to time it down. The officer, if they have a mobile printer, can print it, hand it directly to the property owner, post it directly on the property owner's board. Or they can not print it, and then you can just save a digital copy of it to the actual code enforcement case. And this code enforcement case is going to house that letter. It's going to house all of the inspection history and all the notes that the officer has undertaken in this case. When the officer returns to the property and the issue is resolved, it's very simple. The officer can click close the case. And then this code enforcement case is closed out, archived, archived in one case, and it will be searchable in the master code enforcement case database, either on a list of code enforcement light cases or on a map of code enforcement cases. It's very popular these days in city council and city executives like to have cases to understand where beads, issues, trash issues, vehicle issues are frustrating in their community so they can launch an education in various neighborhoods trying to solve those issues. The mapping functionality is very popular. It's one of our most popular features. In addition to the case listing and the case avenue of all the light cases that have been open over a period of time, we also have a very robust report section. In the report section, any member of the code enforcement team or city council or the county commissioners, office, anybody that wants access to the system, you can access the system. And you know how many new light cases have been opened for any period of time, meeting or year. And they can also generate reports directly out of the system to understand how many letters have been issued, on average, how long cases have stayed open, and 50 other metrics out of boxes. That is the basic review that I generally show in this 15-minute presentation. I'd like to open up for any questions that anybody has today in the audience about how our software works, either on the citizen's side, how citizens can make complaints, get updates on their complaints, or how staff can execute against those complaints or log in if you report this on the cloud light inspection.
So I'll start the questions off, and then we'll, if we got any from the audience, we'll ask them to come up so we can record them on the camera as well. You can't see some of us. I'm Commissioner Kitchens, District One. The question I have, you talked a lot about how it comes in and goes to code enforcement. When you populate the database, can you populate it, or do you populate it by a, say, a code section so that depending on the complaint that comes in, it would be predetermined to what department it goes to? So if it's a water leak, we wouldn't want that going to code enforcement. We would want it to go to the water department. If it's a dangerous dog or dog bite, it would go to animal control. So is that... It sounded like it was a one point that it went in, and then that person referred it to the proper department. And to me, that's just an extra step of a time delay. You've got one person that needs to send it to another person that needs to figure out how to address it and then respond to it.
Yes, sir. That's a great question. So there are multiple ways we can set up the system. We have categories. And categories can be assigned to specific people at the county. So for your example, if a citizen submits a water leak, you can go to somebody in the facilities department. If they submit a dog bite, go to somebody in the animal department. They submit a light case, go to somebody in the code enforcement. So we have a very robust, what we call assignment engine, so the categories can be tied to people. Some people, in the case of a department, in alternative configuration that sometimes folks like to use it by location, by jurisdiction. So if a case is reported in a certain neighborhood, it is assigned to a certain person. And in this particular case, you're 100% correct. This agency has set up their system so that there is a gatekeeper on the incoming complaints. They would like to, on purpose, have some sort of human eyes pressed on this case before they decide to sign it out to. But that is in no way an assessment in order to...
Yeah, because I was familiar with C Click Fix for many years, and we had an administrator on C Click Fix, but it automatically went to the department that had to respond to it. And if that department hadn't responded in 72 hours, the administrator got a notification that, hey, there's a complaint out here that's not being addressed. And then that put the administrator on a time clock too. So that there was nothing just sitting out there.
Yes, sir. This is very similar functionality here for C Click Fix.
Okay. Any other commissioners?
Do all departments have to be part of this program to interact?
The question was, do all departments have to be a part of the program? Do we have to have data uploaded for each department?
Good question. That is not a necessity. We have counties across the country that just began code enforcement to manage light online. We have other counties that start just public works, streets, traffic, head issues. We have other counties that decided on all the departments that's... It just depends on the scope of the project and the needs that you have to discover.
Any questions? In the audience, George, Mr. Scobal, you have a question? Come up, so he can hear you on the camera, and we can get your question.
All right. First of all, you previously had said, I watched it on my phone enough, you can incorporate the animal control into this program as well, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And how long has Warner Robbins, you mentioned Warner Robbins, how long have they had been on the system?
Over 10 years.
Over 10 years.
Oh, okay. All right, good. Thank you.
Yes, sir. You're very welcome.
Anybody else got a question? And I'm assuming pricing is based on the number of departments, the number of database points, the number of, or is it based on population or number of complaints?
Well, yes, sir. That's a good question. We primarily base our pricing based on number of departments that are in the system. But we also do have a population-based pricing model that's more... We are one of the most affordable solutions in the market, so it just depends on who your budget is. It can work.
Okay. Last question. Are you familiar with iWorks?
Yes, sir. I am very familiar with that.
How close to iWorks is this product? Or what, I guess a better question is, what does this solution offer that iWorks doesn't offer? Because that's what we currently have, and I just wanted to, that's what we're looking at. What do we get added features?
That is a very good question. I have some documentation that I can distribute to you that we actually call it the analysis versus us versus iWork versus Google, and some of the other folks who do. The most common reported difference, or the most, the reason a lot of folks come to us for iWork is customer service and just the form of citizens. So we do a very, very good job, in my opinion, of creating a very seamless experience for the citizens and automating a lot of the interactions that take place between code enforcement department, public works, or facility department, with citizens. As I understand, a lot of those interact manually through iWork. It automates a lot of that in order to save you as much time as possible. Our interface is also much more modern. It was upgraded 18 months ago. And we have professionally trained user experienced designers that are purposely focused on how many glitzes deputies make, how many glitzes citizens have to make, the way things are named and placed on the pages to make it as seamless and intuitive as possible.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. If you have any other questions, I'd ask people.
I don't see any. So I think our next steps will be, I'm assuming Jason has all your contacts, I think we'd discuss, I think I would like to see that analysis between iWorks and Comcate, what the differences are, what we would get in added features, and then the pricing on. I would assume we're going to look at all departments, because I don't think customer service should be relegated to one department over another. So I think we get complaints. I definitely don't want to have one left out and somebody trying to report a pothole and they can only get Tiffany or the water department or something like that.
Yes, sir. I understand. I can work in directly based into that information.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for, that was a good presentation. We appreciate the information. And we'll have...
Absolutely. I appreciate you for that. I'll take care of it. Have a very nice day.
All right. Thank you.
What is, what program you mentioned that we currently have, is that what we're using now?
That's the one we just purchased, entered into, what did we get, a three-year contract or two-year contract?
I have to check and see. So the code enforcement module was kind of an add-on to the big software package that we bought primarily for...
The Tyler system?
For finance?
No, this would be, the iWork was primarily for planning and zoning, code enforcement, not code enforcement, building inspections and building permits and that type of thing. So that was the primary focus when Tim and his group were looking for something there. And then this was a module that we were able to add on. I think it's just a year-to-year kind of thing that we have with iWork right now, but I'd have to confirm.
Tiffany was...
Yes, sir. The iWork was a three-year contract, the one where we added, you know, Tim was to begin with, so you had a couple of internal departments, and when we started adding external performance, that was a three-year contract, and the text my vote is a two-year contract.
So I think we look at that analysis, because I don't want to, I know they spent a lot of time, I won't say we, they spent a lot of time, meaning Tiffany and Tim and all the groups that were putting all that data base together and putting it all in there. And we've really just got our wheels rolling on that one. And so I want to make sure if this one provides something much more than that does at a decent price, I'm all for it. But I don't want to go backwards. I don't want to reinvent the wheel and create a new database that won't give us much benefit more than we got. So that analysis, I think, is going to...
What we see is the transparency, there's no transparency with the program that we've got now. You file it, but that's the end of it. Right, right, Frank, y'all?
Well, it's been my experience, you know, I filed several that I get a number, I think it's about 12 digits. And I've called Tiffany, you know, to see what I can say. I'm not able to pick it up on my phone. It's, you know, I've sent pictures in, sent them. Have y'all, have y'all had any experience with it? Have you filed anything? Take my good...
I filed on there just to play around with it, but it was bogus complaints, just so I would, you know, see what happened and where it went and that kind of stuff. So it was just a made-up complaint, but...
It could be something that I'm not doing that's correct. But I've, you know, I've done it on the smartphone and it just, I don't get a...
Everybody out there says that's it. They don't get the kick. They don't know what's going on once you file your complaint. That's what they do.
So I think the analysis will probably bring all that to light. So if they say iWorks doesn't do this and we do it, or if they say iWorks does it and we do it, but you're saying, no, it doesn't do it, then we need to look and see if it's our software issue or if it's a user issue. And that'll, I think that'll bring a lot of that to light. I mean, it'll...
Tiffany, maybe you can explain.
When you submit a complaint, and it gives you the tracking number, like you get, so thank you for submitting a complaint, you go back to the webpage, you put in, it says status of complaint, you put in your code, you hit enter, and it tells you whether it's open, whether it's closed.
But on my phone, it drops that, your code, your pass number, 12 digit number, 10 digit number, it drops it all. You only have your present, your last complaint that you made. It falls previous to that.
You get a different number, you get a different number sent back to you text message or email depending on how you did it for each complaint. There's a separate number for each complaint.
So you can only put one complaint in at a time to see, if you're going back, you've got to put individual numbers in the box.
And hit search when you reach that one.
You've got to write your number down. It's all in your phone.
In the text message or email.
All right. So I think that, I'm looking forward to seeing this analysis, because I want to see what it does better than what we got. And, because when I first, I looked at this presentation from this guy a couple of months ago, and I liked it. It was more simple than C Click Fix, and it wasn't as intrusive. But I'll be honest, I don't know exactly what our iWorks does, because like I said, it started out in one department, morphed into several departments, and we've kind of been working on it as we go. So I'd like to know, you know, the full gamut of what we have now versus what they're offering. But if it's the right price and the right product, I'm all for it. Anything else? We are one minute away from our 6 o'clock meeting, and we have to stay on time with that, don't we, Shannon? Ms. Brody?
Correct.
All right. Ready to move into our board meeting? Okay.
The chairman is here.
Oh.
Make motion to the chairman to speak.
Second.
All right. All in favor? Now I can move in.